It's seven o'clock, July 27th, and we have come to meet as a school board on our Thursday City Hall meeting. The mission of the St. Cloud School District is to create a safe and caring climate and culture in which we prepare, engage, educate, empower, and inspire all learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society. Bruce Mose, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Jeff Paul Rees.
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf.
Here.
Al Dahlgren.
Here.
Bruce Mose.
Here.
Monica Seguda Schwartz.
Here.
Bruce Hentges.
Here.
Let the record show, Mr. Chair, that we are pleased to have at our meeting and in attendance Superintendent Willy Jett, Assistant Superintendent Marcia Baish, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning Lori Poche, Executive Director of Student Services Carol Potter, Executive Director of Technology and Media Services Gary Ganji, Director of Communications and Community Outreach Tammy Deland, Executive Director of Human Resources Tracy Flynn Bowe, and Executive Director of Business Services Amy Scallarud.
Thank you, Mr. Mose. First up is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda consists of non-controversial items that the Board routinely adopts without debate. Any single member of the Board may remove an item from the Consent Agenda by requesting removal at the time the Consent Agenda is moved for adoption. The full text of items can be found at the end of the Agenda. On tonight's Consent Agenda is the approval of tonight's Agenda, approval of the meeting minutes from the meetings of June 22nd and July 12th, the monthly Treasurer's Report for June 2017, approval of payment of bills and other financial transactions in the grand total amount of $9,629,721.99, approval of personnel and staff changes, acceptance of grant, awards, and donations, authorization of LEA representatives, approval of the Minnesota School Boards Association membership renewal, approval of the Association of Metro School District's membership dues for 2017-2018, Coriview Education Center change orders totaling plus $16,225.93, quarterly expenditures for Board members April 1st through June 30th totaling $752.99, and the 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item from tonight's Consent Agenda? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Looking for a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the Consent Agenda.
Bruce?
I'll second that motion.
Bruce and Bruce. Is there any discussion? If not, Mr. Mose, would you call roll?
Maker of the motion, Bruce Hentges.
Yes.
Secondary maker, Bruce Mose, yes. Monica Seguda Schwartz.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren.
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf.
Yes.
Jeff Paul Rees.
Yes.
And Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Next, in information items, we get to get a summary of our July work session and a preview of the August work session, Marcia Baish.
Good evening, Chair Dahlgren, Superintendent Jett, and members of the Board. The July work session topics included the New Tech High School update. I'm not sure what to do. David Leopold, Architect with IIW Minnesota, along with Scott Krenner, Architect with the Cunningham Group, presented an update on the design concept opportunities at the site as well as the permitting process. The second item on the agenda was the proposed new policy 534. Amy Scallarud, Interim Executive Director of Business Services, presented proposed new Board Policy 534 unpaid meal charges for a first reading. Adjustments will be made to the proposed policy after Board discussion, and the updated policy will again be on this evening's Agenda for a second reading. The Strategic Plan Progress Update was the third item on the Agenda. Lori Poche, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, along with Dr. Sylvia Huff, Director of Research Evaluation Assessment and Grants, reviewed information from the Core Planning Team, including updates and highlights from the current school year and the recommendations for the upcoming school year. Three main strategies of the five-year plan were reviewed, as well as the summaries of progress and measurement results. It was noted that proficiency rates have increased due to implementation of new curricular materials. The Board will be asked to reaffirm and approve the district's strategic plan this evening. The fourth item on the Agenda was the proposed revised Board Policy 506. Carol Potter, Executive Director of Student Services, Special Education, presented and reviewed proposed revised Board Policy 506, Student Discipline, for its second reading. She reviewed the updates that have been made based on discussions held after the first reading. Board Chair Dahlgren suggested one additional, one addition, which will be included prior to the third and final reading this evening, and the proposed revised Board Policy will be on tonight's Agenda for approval. Thank you.
Next, we move into discussion and action items. First is an action item, reaffirmation of the strategic plan, and that is Superintendent Willy Jett and Lori Poche.
Good evening, Chair Dahlgren, members of the Board. Four years ago, the Board tasked me with creating a strategic plan for the district, and it called for an inclusive process with parents, students, staff, and community members. I believe we were successful in engaging over 400 community individuals in that overall process. The strategic plan is a public document, but it is a blueprint for internal operational decisions. It is a map of how we proceed in achieving our mission and objectives. We have seen numerous positive outcomes in the first three years of implementation in programs such as Avid, Achievement Via Individual Determination, Talent Development and Accelerated Services, in our hiring practices, and even our referendum success. Evidence of achieving our safe and welcoming objective can be seen in the 742 Expo, our elementary goal-setting conferences, and projects like Coriview Education Center and the New Tech High School. Now, I don't want to steal Lori's thunder, so at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Lori Poche to present some of the highlights of the strategic plan to date. At the end of this presentation, I would like to remind the Board that approval of the updated strategic plan is an action item on the Agenda. And lastly, I would like to thank our teachers and staff for their hard work and our tremendous progress. Lori.
Thank you. Board Chair Dahlgren, Superintendent Jett, members of the school board, thank you for the opportunity to be here again tonight. At our last, at the last work session, I presented along with Dr. Huff in great detail about the work that was accomplished last year in the strategic plan. Tonight's going to be a brief summary of some of those highlights, and then a chance to answer some questions from you, and again, asking for reaffirmation of the plan. As a reminder, our core, the Core Planning Team is made up of students, parents, community members, staff, administrators, and school board representatives. The Core Planning Team met on April 25th to review the summary of progress as it does each year. That summary of progress was shared in depth, and recommendations were made to the Superintendent's Cabinet regarding priorities for this upcoming year. Lengthy presentations were made that day about each strategy and regarding the measurement. Those presentations were followed by a question and answer time, and in the afternoon, Core Planning Groups met to discuss in detail each strategy. They presented their recommendations to the entire team, and then reached consensus regarding recommendations for this upcoming year's priority results. The Superintendent's Cabinet then reviewed those recommendations on May 15th and made final recommendations to the Superintendent, which you will hear later on tonight. Those recommendations will be presented in a few minutes. And let's get it going. So, our mission statement, which is recited at every Board meeting, is more than just words on a paper. Our mission statement is something that is at the center of all of our work in the district. It's at the center of all of the decisions that we make. It was really inspiring for me to hear comments from the students at the Core Planning Team about their excitement around the mission and the work that's being done with the strategic plan. They also reaffirmed the value of the work that is done in the district and our continued So, as a reminder, we have three strategies that are our focus. This plan is a five-year plan, and each year, different strategies or different priority results are focused on. During the school year, we have presented to you vision cards and other presentations that have given you detailed information about our progress throughout the year. Again, tonight is a summary of the success and the celebrations from the hard work, as Superintendent Jett shared, of our leadership, our teachers, our students, and our community. So, for the three strategies, we have designated strategy leaders who kind of make sure that all of the work is happening around these. So, I am the leader for Strategy 1, Tammy Deland for Strategy 2, and Tracy Bowe for Strategy 3. Joni Olson was the strategy leader for the measurement, and that will now be Dr. Sylvia Huff. So, the major emphasis of our mission statement and the strategies is around student success. That includes academic success. Each strategy serves to meet the needs of our students, to meet the needs of all of our students, and to ultimately impact their achievement. At the beginning of this process, we selected reading as our area to focus in. This was supported financially through Board commitments to new curricular resources in the new curriculum review process, and also with time and professional development. We know that implementation takes time, but we began to see some immediate results because of this commitment. Again, although we have shared detailed information through the year, Dr. Huff shared at the work session a few of the highlights that we feel are a direct result of our focus with strategic planning, and I'm going to go through a few of those now. So, the first slide that you see looks at our reading proficiency rates by race, and we are really excited to see that from 2014 to 2016, and especially from 15 to 16, we had increases in each of our racial groups in reading. You have looked at further disaggregation throughout the year for each of these groups. Another highlight, so as we, as we disaggregate our data, when we look at our non-EL students, you can see here, our non-EL students also showed growth between 2015 and 2016. And this is a chart that talks about our, our English learners. They are given an assessment called the Access Test, and the Access measures their proficiency in the English language. What this chart does is a correlation between their access levels and their MCA scores. So, as you know, all of our English learners are required to take the MCAs each year. So, a Level 1 in Access would be a student who is probably new to country and has very, very limited English. So, you can see that our Level 1 students, as we would expect, are not going to meet on our MCAs. But as they progress with their, their English proficiency, we also see that they are meeting and exceeding on our state MCAs by the time they reach Level 6. Level 6 means that they're pretty proficient in English, and when they have reached that proficiency, they no longer receive EL students, so after Year 6 of Access, they don't count in our EL scores any longer. This is a new slide that you didn't see at the work session because we just received this information, but we wanted to share with you because we really do work to meet the needs of all of our students in the district. We wanted to share with you some of the information about our Advanced Placement courses. Last year, we had 541 students in our high schools who took part in Advanced Placement classes. We have 19 different AP courses that are offered at our schools, and in those courses, they took 23 separate tests through those courses. We had 11 of those areas where our mean or our average score met or exceeded the state or national average. So, our students are doing really well. We had 1,020 exams taken from those 541 students, and nearly 60% of those earned a score of 3, 4, or 5. Now, what that means, a score of 3, 4, or 5, is the range of scores that is necessary to earn college credit, and that range or those scores depend on the college or university that the student chooses to attend. And then, looking at graduation rates. Again, we consider this to be a success in our district. There's a few things on this graph. The blue line shows the state average for four-year graduation rates. When we look at our Tech and Apollo rates, that's the red line, and you can see that our graduation rates at Tech and Apollo exceed the state graduation rates. We're also excited to show that the green line are our black students, and the purple line are students who receive free and reduced lunch pricing. And you can see that we've had dramatic increases in those groups as well in terms of graduation rates. We don't want to leave out McKinley because we have a lot of successes at McKinley as well. And as we talked about, meeting the needs of all of our students, we know that we have some students who it may take more than four years in order to graduate. So, we are also seeing between 2015 and 2016, because of the hard work of our students at McKinley and our staff at McKinley, an increase in our five-year graduation rate there as well. And that brings us to our recommendations. You have in your packet a copy of our proposed strategic plan for next year. So, this is a little different than the work session when this has the updates for what our priorities will be for next year. So, two recommendations that we're asking for. The first is that you approve the priority results that were recommended by the Core Team and our Superintendent's Cabinet, and those are in Strategy 1 to continue with, with result statements number 2, 3, and 4, which you have in your, your packet; in Strategy 2 to continue with 2, 3, and 7, and add number 4; in Strategy 3 to continue with number 3 and 5, and to add number 6 and 7; and in Measurement to continue number 5, and add numbers 2 and number 4. And finally, we ask tonight that you reaffirm and approve the strategic plan, and publicly recognize the progress made towards achievement of the plan's mission. Thank you, and any questions? We have many of us from the different strategies who can help answer.
Lori, if I could just take us back to the English Language Learner page. There's some information there that really struck me as we looked at it in work session, and I just wanted to emphasize it, that as you, as our English Language Learners become English proficient, and are in Level 5 and Level 6, they are actually passing the MCAs at a higher percentage level than other categories of students, including white, the category of white or Caucasian students. Is that correct?
Correct.
And what, most people would say, gee, kids seem to be pretty proficient in English pretty quickly because they can converse. What's, can you talk a little bit about what actually makes them proficient enough to perform well on MCA or standardized tests?
And I wish Dr. Huff was here to really explain that as well as she could. You know, I like to think about, about toddlers in any culture and learning any language, and we know that the progression of learning language starts with speaking, and then moves to reading, and then to writing. So, it's the same when we, if I would go to another country, I would learn to converse and to understand that language before I'd be able to read it and before I'd be able to write it, and we see that same progression. We know that when we have kindergartners coming in, most of them are not able to read in English yet, no matter what their background is, so we know that it takes six to seven years in native language to be able to read, begin reading. The same is true of our English learners. It takes time for them to learn, but what we find is that for a lot of our English learners, they may be coming with two or even three other languages and pick up on English much faster and are able to show proficiency. Hope that answered it.
It does. Thank you. That was a very good answer, and I think it's certainly something for us to celebrate when we take a look at the progress those students make in reaching proficiency once they capture the finer points of the English language.
Correct.
Thank you.
Bruce Mose.
Lori, on that same page, following up with Mr. Hentges's inquiry, those vertical bars there, those six levels of proficiency are not years, is that, am I correct?
Correct.
Those six levels could be across blank number of years. What would I, what would I put in there if I were going to want to?
We, we tend to see about seven years when students are in our English Learner program for them to be able to progress to the Level 6 proficiency, which really matches up with state and national proficiency times as well.
I imagine a man at my stage of life would take 14 years to become proficient in another language, in another language.
Which would take me a long time.
Do you have that many years yet, Mr. Mose? Thank you very much.
Jerry.
I'm going to support the strategic plan. Thank you to the people who worked on it. I think it's great that the plan has multiple components, supporting professional staff development and, and onboarding teachers, creating a welcoming environment, and what's looking at us, staring us in the face here, which is
Partnerships.
Academic growth and achievement. And because all of those things are a piece of each other, and it, and it reminds me of what our major job is and what our resources are for. I'm the liaison to Tullaihi. I live in the Tullaihi neighborhood. Not so long ago, three or four years ago, the proficiency scores of English-speaking African-American students was substantially below the state average. We, the district, the Superintendent, put resources in, money, new curriculum and text materials, lots of professional staff development, and a leader who believed those kids could succeed and communicated to that to her staff. And that proficiency rate for my school, for those students, has tripled, tripled during that time period, and is now above the state average for that same group, but tripled. The, really, it's, it's almost impossible to find a school in the state of Minnesota where that rate has increased. You're looking at some schools in the Twin Cities that are inching up by a percent. And I think, just the point I want to make is that money and resources is, is not enough because people throw money at places, but we got a lot out of the resources. We put significant resources, more than a million dollars into, into reading and to textbooks, and I don't know what math scores are going to look like this, this year because we're not allowed to see them.
Allowed to see them.
Historically, in central Minnesota, they're going down. And I believe that if we've got some resources, we should try the same strategy that seemed to work with reading, but that it's going to take, I mean, that's what our resources are for, and, and if we do that, I believe co-teaching, training teachers and so on, we'll start to see the same results with these same students.
And we are, you know, as I shared with you at the beginning, we decided to focus on reading first, knowing that we also needed to work on math. But math is a couple of years behind in adoption in the curriculum cycle, so we know that it will take a little longer for us to be able to see some of the results in math that we did in reading. I think it's also important to remember that we're not meeting the needs of certain groups of students at the expense of any other group, but that we are meeting the needs of all of our students in a variety of ways.
Thank you, Jerry. And I think, you know, to comment on the strategic plan, I think it's been a very good thing for our district. It has guided us in a very positive direction. I think also it's important to note that a Board by and of itself, or a person, you know, a person on the Board by and of themselves is not going to change the direction of the district in any way. It takes a very strong and visionary leader and leadership group. It's, again, I'm not going to give all the credit to Willy. I'm going to say that it's the entire group of executive staff, and down on into principals. We've had a lot of principal changes and a lot of principal training and growth, and right on down into teachers, and every person that works in one of our schools is responsible for a portion of the strategic plan. And when you look at the changes, just the wholesale changes that have been made in the last three or four years since the strategic plan was put in place, from the institution of the STAR testing program, where we started looking at the growth of each individual student, not just where a student was in relationship to other students. So, now with the combination of the two, we can devise an educational plan for that student that will bring them up to grade level because we can monitor the speed at which they are growing. We put in place a gifted and talented program all the way down into the elementary schools, which we're identifying kids who are far above their grade level and challenging those kids to continue learning at a high rate, because not only are we identifying that they are above their grade level, we are identifying how fast they are growing. So, if they're a third grader reading at a seventh grade level, we aren't going to be happy unless they're reading at an eighth or ninth grade level when they're moving into fourth grade. So, you, you combine those things, and all of a sudden, we have a program in place in which we can track and monitor each and every one of the kids. We've put in place new reading curriculum. We've put in place new math curriculum. We have put in place an AVID program and trained, I would imagine, hundreds of people in the, in the AVID program to help kids move, move up and through and prepare for college. I mean, and that's just, that's just a portion of the things that have been identified as needs in this district through the strategic plan that we've put in place, and it seems to be working. The early results indicate that it is working. And so, as not to alarm everybody, Jerry, we, we will get to see the math scores. We just can't see them until the embargo is lifted by the state, but they will show them to us when we can see them. But anyway, I just, congratulations on the success so far with the strategic plan, and hope for continued success and growth moving into the future. Bruce Hentges.
Just wanted to make one quick comment. Obviously, I think all of us are supportive of the renewal of the strategic plan and appreciative of the great work that is being done. At our last monthly Board meeting, Carol Potter and Jeff Horton kept us here till about midnight talking about Student Services, the Department of Student Services, and at that time, I somewhat jokingly mentioned, but I'd just like to throw it out so that maybe it gets written down and con- maybe it gets written down and considered when we review this plan again, that perhaps we could add to our mission statement, a statement or a word of support, that we prepare, engage, educate, empower, support, or nurture, and inspire all learners. Because clearly, that is a big part of what we do in, in supporting kids. And it might be a little softer word also than some of the things empower and, but just an idea that I wanted to bring up.
Thank you. Is there any more, is there any more comments from members of the board? If not, this is an action item, so we'd be looking for a motion and a second to approve or reaffirm the strategic plan for the 2017-18 school year.
I move.
Monica?
I'll second.
Shannon. Monica, Shannon. Mr. Mose, would you call roll?
Mr. Mose, yes. Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Yes.
Bruce Hentges.
Yes.
Al Dolgren.
Yes.
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf.
Yes.
Jeff Polryce.
Yes.
Paul Reese.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mose. Next is another action item. It is the approval of the revised Board Policy 506, Student Discipline. This is the third and final reading and will be presented by Carol Potter.
Good evening, Chair Dolgren, Superintendent Jett, members of the board. As you had stated, we're here for the third reading of Board Policy 506, the discipline policy. I think so. It is. Is it okay? Okay. Since the work session, we have had one change discussed at our work session earlier this month. And in your board agenda packet, if you'd like to turn to page 27 in your packet, that page of your packet is actually 506 dash three, page three of the policy itself. And under section two, general statement of policy, we added the phrase "parents/guardians." So all district staff are committed to establishing and engaging in relationships with parents, guardians, other public agencies, and community resources to ensure support for the social and emotional needs of all students. And so we just added the parents and guardians in there as suggested.
Is that it? That's the only change since the last time? Okay.
That is the only change since the last time.
Are there any board members that have any questions? Jerry Von Korf.
Move adoption. That doesn't, I was going to move adoption, and it doesn't stop people from talking, but...
So Jerry moves adoption, and I will second that. And we have a second from Bruce. Jerry, did you have comments?
I just want to say how pleasant and thoughtful this work, the work product was. The, your committee, Shannon, was involved. I think the chair was involved and, and the, this, people who are watching this are the advocates for these students, teachers, parents, and everybody wants you to take care of the thing that's important to them. And sometimes when you have a department like that, you can kind of say, I don't want to listen to that. I know what I'm doing. And you did exactly the opposite. I mean, you did know what you were doing, but just the whole way that, that you listened and, and tried to make this better, it was just fabulous. It's a model for how I would like to see people working with the board and with the superintendent. And thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for allowing me to do that and, and creating an environment where that can happen. It was just, it was just fabulous.
Shannon.
Carol, I just want to say thank you, that you had a smile on the whole time. And it took a lot of patience and educating on our part to, to walk us through this process and to tolerate the rewrites, many, many of them. So thank you very much.
Very welcome. It has been over a year and a half that we have done this, but it has been well worth it, and I think we have a really good product.
Anyone down there? No? So I would say thank you also, Carol. It, it has been a long ride on this one. I know you brought it to the Board Development Committee. It was, it was over a year ago for the first time, and then I believe it came forward for a first reading way back. So this is actually the fourth reading on this one because you took it back to the committee and reworked it from there. And then there's been a lot of back and forth. And I think it's a, it's a big policy. It's an important policy. It, it, it means a lot. It has a lot to do with how we run our schools. So it's one of the more important daily use policies that falls within the policy manual. And the Minnesota School Boards Association, whose policies we follow, had a wholly inadequate discipline policy. And I know that you recognized that and you assembled the group, the out, the, the group of outside people or to consult with and to sit down and write a policy that would work for us. And then through the process of multiple readings back and forth and a lot of negotiation with board members between, you know, individually between meetings, we've come to a policy that we can all agree on, and I think it's a fantastic one. I personally believe, and I believe that when we're done with all of the policies, I think we have one left, we should turn around and send our new set of policies back to the Minnesota School Boards Association and tell Kathy that, you know, this is the result. She did an audit of our policies and gave us proposed new policies. We took her feedback very seriously and went through every single policy with a fine-toothed comb and made changes where we felt necessary. And I know we have an, an HR policy in there that is a model, really one of the first for any school in the state, that Tracy worked with the state of Minnesota to write. So there are some examples in there that the School Boards Association could probably take to heart. And I think there's some modifications that we made that would be good for a lot of, a lot of schools. So anyway, I appreciate the effort on this one. It's a big one. I do have a question on the implementation of it now. We will, if we adopt it tonight, if it passes when we vote and we adopt it this evening, then how will this be communicated to the students at the beginning of the school year? Because I'm assuming that the, the current, the, the discipline policy that's in the student handbook would be the old policy.
So starting on Monday already, Monday afternoon, we have a review of our code of conduct, which we use to write 506. So a large committee is coming together again. Several of the members that have been part of this committee are on that committee as well. We'll review the code of conduct. On Tuesday, we'll be, we have our all district administrator or principals and assistant principals, directors and supervisors, Professional Development Day on Tuesday. And so I will be presenting Policy 506 to all of those folks. And then at each of the sites, again, in the fall, they will utilize the code of conduct video, which you had seen, and also be reviewing 506 with their staff members as well.
Will there be a direct communication to the parents of the new discipline policy or no?
The discipline policy, there will be direct communication of the discipline policy through the code of conduct. I guess we haven't discussed specifically if we will do Board Policy 506 directly with parents and students. And so I think that's something that we, as a cabinet, could talk about to see how that could be done.
Okay. Any other questions? Bruce Mose.
Carol, just wanted to inquire, how will we know that this is, how do we measure the effectiveness of this particular policy? What will be an indicator of its success to its purpose?
I think there will be a lot of things that we will measure. So one would be the ultimate number of suspensions that we have, the number of out-of-school suspensions, the number of in-school suspensions, the number of students that are seen in our support rooms. I think the number of students that are removed from classes or dismissed from school for the day. So there's a lot of that data that we collect in our Skyward Student Information System that would be a direct result of this. And then I think it is a direct result, when we look at our climate surveys as well, to see how students rank, how they feel about school. Are they positive about the relationships that are being built at school? And I think, you know, parents too, they have great input into how this works as well. So those are all different types of measurements that we will look at to see if it is effective. And one piece that I have really enjoyed is getting feedback from administrators to see if it, it makes sense and see if it flows and see if it's workable in their day-to-day that they are utilizing it with students. And so again, on Monday, when we have our code of conduct review, we'll talk about that again to see, do all the pieces make sense in what we're doing and the interactions that we're having with students every day? So some of it is objective, some of it is subjective in our measurement for this policy.
Thank you. Monica? Did you have a comment? No? Anyone else? Anyone else? Jerry? Jerry?
While, while you're at it, I just want to emphasize how complicated this is. I mean, there's, there's a lot of judgments to be made. And so I want to speak in support of anything and everything that you can do and every, any resources you can get to translate these policies into guidance for the people who have to follow. Because I think if I were a teacher or a parent, but especially a teacher or one of your supervisors and so on, they're going to discover that when they read this, even though we've done the best we can, that, that they're going to be, there's going to be some training that they need. And hopefully, as you're doing that training, you'll put it in writing so that, so that we can use it over and over again.
There's an art and a science to this piece and anything that we do around discipline. You know, the science is really the rules and the policy itself. And then the art is really the knowing our students well enough to build those relationships. And then how do we utilize the policy to guide what we do?
Okay. Any other comments? If not...
Did we do a motion? No, did you move it?
You moved it. We moved it. We have a motion. We do have a second, so I guess we're looking for a roll call. Mr. Mose.
Maker of the motion, Jerry Von Korf.
Yes.
Second maker of the motion, Bruce Hentges.
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Yes.
Al Dolgren.
Yes.
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Bruce Mose. Yes. And Jeff Polryce.
Yes.
Thank you, Carol. Next on the agenda is a discussion item. It's the proposed new Board Policy 534, Unpaid Meal Charges. It's here for a second reading, and we're looking, Amy, for Amy Skellard to present.
Good evening, Superintendent Jett, Chair Dolgren, school board members. In front of you tonight is the Policy 534, Unpaid Meal Charges, for a second reading. The policy is on page 62 of your board packet, and there is one change from the first reading, and that is in section two, Payment of Meals. In the original policy that came through for the first reading, there were a number of items that were not applicable anymore after the decision was made to eliminate the alternate meal for students with a negative balance. And so the policy was cleaned up, removed those items that weren't applicable, and that's what you see in front of you. There were no changes in any of the other sections.
Any discussion? Shannon?
I just have a couple of comments. Now, to clarify, we didn't have a policy in place before, correct? Is this a new policy to us?
Yes, this is a new policy, and it's a new policy for MSBA also. They just released the sample policy this summer.
Okay. The outcome of this policy, and I know we have some great district practices already in place, but I am just thrilled about how we are handling unpaid meals. And we do not turn away any child for a hot meal, and now a hot meal. We are not providing a peanut butter sandwich or whatever it is, an alternative meal. Correct. So children do not know if a child has a negative balance.
Correct.
And I think that is a wonderful policy to have in place.
Bruce? No? No? Thank you, Amy. That would be a second reading, so there is no call for action on that one. Next item on the agenda is item D, an action item, purchase of property at 1201 Second Street South, Wade Park, known as the Minnesota School of Business. Willie Jett and Amy Skellard.
Chair Dolgren, members of the board. Tonight, we must make the decision whether or not to purchase the Minnesota School of Business and relocate our district administrative offices, Welcome Center, and Media Services Department to that site. With every opportunity comes potential costs, and we must carefully weigh all considerations. The pros, excuse me, the pros. We know that purchasing the building and land currently occupied by the Minnesota School of Business makes sense from a financial perspective. The property is currently undervalued according to real estate analysis, and the facility is in turnkey shape. The building's infrastructure and design would require minimal investment and allow occupancy possibly as early as next fall. Second, by moving the district administrative offices out of Apollo, we'll provide much-needed instructional and office space for their students and staff several years sooner than if we relocate to a renovated tech site. We know the renovation process of the old tech high school is fraught with potential unknown costs, and we would need to develop plans for the space unoccupied by district offices and personnel. Because we remain committed to being careful stewards of our public's finances, this makes sense. The cons, every choice carries potential costs, and this one is no different. During last year's referendum process, we spent countless hours listening to input from our community. One of the primary concerns we heard was the lack of a plan for the existing tech high school building and site. In response, we convened a subcommittee of local, political, and business leaders who spent time developing a proposal to repurpose staff facility. The existing tech high school site would provide a central location that easily is easily accessible for families, staff, and students. The repurposing this facility affirms our commitment to maintaining a vital city core. And finally, one of the biggest potential costs affixed to this decision is public faith in us. And while we have good reasons to now make a different decision, our ability to ask our community for additional resources in the future may be impacted by the choice we make tonight. Those are some of the pros. Those are some of the cons. And now I'd like to open it up for questions, comments, discussion.
Jerry.
We, we looked at this at the Finance Committee, and the agenda says that the Finance Committee unanimously recommends this proposal. I want to say a couple of reasons why I'm going to support it. First of all, whatever we said or didn't say to anyone about this site, we have a moral and ethical commitment and a commitment to our community to make sure that that site is used in a way that supports the neighborhood, the downtown, and the community at large. And I believe that in order to make that happen, we need vastly more than an occupant for 20, 40,000 square feet in the tech site. In fact, and you know, I do a lot of development work, my firm does a lot of development work. I really question whether that proposal is the most, even if we move in there, the majority of that site is not going to have a use, and we're still going to need a plan. And so my vote for this plan is not based on the belief that we can walk away from the commitment to that site. People probably aren't going to want to hear this, but I chaired the Finance Committee last year. This idea came to the Finance Committee in August. That's the first time that we heard, heard about it. The minutes of the Finance Committee are quite clear. We had two plans that we heard about. We had two plans that we heard about. Shannon had a plan. We talked about that plan in that meeting. And we said that Shannon should go to the superintendent with that plan. And we had, we mapped out a procedure whereby that plan, to use that facility would be vetted and then would come back to the board, to the Finance Committee and to the board. And we were also told that there was a subcommittee of the Advisory Committee consisting of the mayor, Patty Gartland, the Chamber of Commerce, and somebody else that the minutes don't reflect, who were working on a proposal to put the district administration office in the tech building. And the minutes of the Finance Committee reflect that the Finance Committee expected that that... If that proposal was going to be approved, that it would be vetted by the administration, that it would come back to the Finance Committee, that the Finance Committee would then either recommend it or not recommend it to the board, and that there would be a board decision on whether that proposal was something that the board would back. And the minutes say quite clearly that we wanted to make it clear that nobody was authorized to say that the board was committed to that project until the board decided. During that time period, I had a number of conversations with the mayor. I urged him to do some things. And here's what the mayor said. And they involved putting some city money into this project, some economic development project involving planners. And the mayor said, "Mr. Von Korf, I cannot commit the resources of the city without approval of City Council. That's how it works at the city, and that's how it works in the school district." Now, where I'm heading is that... The committee that recommended this did not come back to the Finance Committee. They didn't come to the board. They... I've heard somebody in the audience told me some features of that proposal I've never heard about. I don't know if they're true or not. But they certainly never came back to the Finance Committee and they never came back to the board. That, all that being said, that does not deny that there are people who feel that some kind of commitment was made. That's what the superintendent is speaking to. I don't think we can take that away. There are people that thought that this was going to happen. And so we need to take that into account. My issue is that when I heard about this plan, it was a $6 million plan. And it's, or maybe even eight million dollars. And that six to eight million dollars was going to be a strain on the district because we're not in the development business. Over here in City Hall, they have CDBG money, they have TIF money, they have access to PUD money and deed money. And we got a place right across the street where students are. St. Cloud State University has so far put $7 million of public money into that facility to house relatively high-income students. All over this place, we have hard-to-develop sites that have been developed with city resources and city money. And this project calls for originally $6 million, and now it's calling for $14 million. And the last quote we got was, "We cannot guarantee that that's going to be all it is. And if you do that, the rest of the building still isn't going to be ready." So I am really sorry that people heard that we made a promise. And I'm not trying to take that away because that is really, really unfortunate. But we just heard earlier today about what education money does. And we are not Economic Development Authority for this community. The Economic Development Authority needs to step up to the plate because that can be a fabulous site. The Clarkfield Site, the Media Center Site, and the Tech Site. It needs to be used in a way that the community can be proud of. And we can do that. But we're going to do it by sticking the district administration office into 40,000 square feet with the rest of the building unoccupied. And so again, I just want to emphasize, you know, I've said that the board didn't approve this, and it did not. But that doesn't excuse the misunderstanding that arose because that's something that we have to confront. I think we're going to confront it by keeping the important commitment, which is to make sure that that facility is developed in a way that complements the neighborhood and turns into something wonderful. Thank you.
Shannon.
Did the school board vote on this? Did the school board guarantee it 100%? Jerry, I agree with you. The answer is no. You mentioned moral and ethical obligation. The school board has a moral and ethical obligation to bridge the district works and the community together. Did we mislead the community and our voters? Absolutely yes. There are many articles in the newspaper. And I get it that maybe those, you don't want to say that we said that or that's not exactly truth. But I would like to point out, you have some documents there, that on our school district website, under referendum 2016, we have a frequently asked question page. There are 15 questions on this page. Forty percent of them, six out of 15, are talking about one topic. Do you know what that topic is? It's what are we going to do with the tech building? If we, if that wasn't a promise, if you can honestly say that we didn't mislead them by having six out of 15 questions talk about this, I don't think you're being honest with yourself. Question number six. What will happen at the current tech high school if voters approve question one? Question number seven. How much will the remodel for the district administrative offices and Welcome Center cost? And how will you fund it? Question number eight. Why can you repurpose tech high school for office space when others have recommended it not to be remodeled for educational use? Question number nine. Why do experts recommend building a new tech high school rather than remodel the current facility? I'm sorry, I'm going to have to drop that one down. Take that one off of there. Oh, no, that's not number nine. Still back to six. Question number 11. Is moving the district admin offices and Welcome Center to this site a financially sound choice? Which the answer is yes. Question number 12. What happens to the current tech high school site if question two does not pass? And the sixth question, question number 13. Who was on this tech repurposing committee? That's misled. Six out of 15 questions talk about putting district offices at tech high school. Sure, we didn't say it's approved. But we do have a moral and ethical responsibility to solve this. I am voting no, not on the end result. I support that we use our money wisely. But not today. We don't spend the $6 million today. We have the sequence of these events in the wrong order. Somebody mentioned that this is a lose-lose situation, that we're going to have people upset that we didn't use our money wisely, or we're going to have people upset because we didn't fulfill our promise. I propose a win-win situation. We can save money by purchasing admin buildings somewhere else, but not yet. Not until we come up with an answer that is community-based and accepted and worked through the community. We put two proposals on the table. And we say, this was our original proposals, admin offices. This is how much it would cost. And then we propose a community-based solution. We have sourced this, we have worked through this. This is what they would like to do. Now, we present it as a choice. And once they pick and if they support the community-based decision, we can move and we can spend our $6 million and be financially responsible. But we can't buy first. We break the trust of our voters. We will not pass a referendum for Apollo.
I'd like to make a motion to table the vote in the purchase of the MSB building and to reconhold a public hearing with the community about implications for tech building.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a discussion.
I guess I have a question.
Can I speak in my motion? So I believe that what we are talking about here are two different things. And I am afraid that the voting today in this motion is going to talk about one thing without the other. The two different things that I believe that we are talking about here are the purchase of a building because it makes financial sense for our district. The part that we are not talking about here is about what happened with perceptions or not perceptions, with promises believed that were made or not believed that were made, with our commitment to work with our community. Very specifically, with our commitment to work with our community. At some point in my campaign, I committed to make sure that this board was going to be more transparent, I was going to be working more actively with the community. What we are doing today doesn't look like that. What I, I know the consequences of this motion. If we table this, we may lose the purchase agreement of the building. So I encourage all the people that are here and all us to try to make pressure in the cellar to let us have a little bit more of time because they did not give us the time before. And we have to sign this by the end of the month. But those arrangements can also be made. So I really think that we ought to the community to give them the opportunity to talk to them and to come to an agreement, to agreements together. So that's why I'm making this motion.
I have a question. And transparency is a word that I hear thrown around a lot. And to me, this lacks transparency. My question is, why wasn't our community given the opportunity to speak and to have public input before we put this to a vote?
The community is given an opportunity for public input at every single work session meeting.
But they didn't know.
It was on the agenda.
Okay, I have the agenda in front of me. And maybe I didn't see it somewhere else, and I apologize. But the agenda that I got, number, the last item on the agenda on page two says, "Possible real estate purchase of property located at 1201 Second Street South, Wade Park, Minnesota." Is that what was on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Did the public understand that that's what we were talking about? Was purchasing the business college and moving district office and Welcome Center there instead of moving it to the tech building? Where on there does it say that?
It isn't in the detail of it. It's on the agenda for discussion that evening, Shannon. You can't...
Lacks transparency.
Okay. If that's your opinion, you can have your opinion. I'm okay with you having an opinion.
Well, I know for myself that we notified the newspaper. Mr. Dogren called the newspaper to tell them what this was about. I talked to the reporter to tell them what it was about. And I don't recall, we heard the price at the last session. I do not recall a single board member asking for a public hearing. You were at the agenda... Look, a public hearing, that's a perfectly good request. But you were at the agenda meeting. You didn't say, "I request a public hearing." I'm not criticizing you for that at all. But to make it suggest that after you were at the agenda meeting and didn't ask for a public hearing, that this is being steamrolled because nobody's doing a public hearing, none of us asked, not to me anyway, and asked for a public hearing.
I was not given the dates, the offers, the lockout dates of the offer. That was not made known to me.
Yep, I think, I think the issues here are important. But we don't need to win the issues by saying nobody thought about having a public hearing. No board member asked for a public hearing. You're asking for it now. Asking it for it now means we lose the Minnesota School of Business. And I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying, asking for it now instead of trying to set it up before now makes that hearing different. And if you wanted a hearing, you should have asked for it. But you know, if people want to have a hearing and lose the MSBs, then we can vote on it.
Just to clarify something. On the May 18th Board Finance and Audit Committee meeting, there was a discussion of both the results of the study on the cost to renovate tech high school and the Minnesota School of Business building. That report would have been given at our May school board meeting. Now, I'm just saying that to make the point that there has been no effort by anyone on the board to hide this from the community. I think there has been an effort to do our due diligence. I have some comments that I eventually want to make about the referendum. But because of the necessity of the 30-day letter here, I would speak against the motion to delay the purchase of that building. That doesn't preclude some of the other things that we've been talking about from happening. And I would like to mention that a little bit as I talk too in a minute. But I think right now we have a motion on the floor. And I guess I would say there has been public... People tend to not focus in on things until it's time to happen. But there's been no effort that, and, well, I would just say, I don't think there's been an effort by anybody to be less than transparent in looking at the expenses of remodeling tech and the process of acquiring potentially a new building.
Monica.
I think that it has, we have not made a lot of effort to hide this. We also have not made any effort to make it more public. And when we are going to talk about community understanding or community input, I think that we have to go all out to make it public. I think that when it finally got completely public and when it's put in the newspaper, when somebody else said something, we have gotten a lot of feedback about it. So I find unfair and a little insulting to say that people don't pay attention to things until the last minute. So I completely disagree with that point. And about the point about no board member said that we should have a public hearing? Yes, Jerry. No board member said before that we should have a public hearing. I am saying it right now. And I'm so sorry, I'm learning my way through this board and how this works. So you're not going to blame me for not saying it before. I still feel the same thing that I felt earlier. And I have more clarity of what is what I want to do and what I think needs to be done right now. That's why I'm making the motion to have a public hearing at this point and not any minute earlier.
Mr. Chair, you misunderstood what I was saying.
Well, the motion was not to have a public hearing at this time. The motion was to postpone the vote. Could I change the agenda to have a public... Could I change the agenda to have a, a public hearing at this point in time? It was to postpone the vote.
You can't read my motion. I can't read my motion. My motion was to table the vote in the purchase of the MSB building until we can hold a public hearing with the community about implications for tech building.
So the, so the motion was to table the vote.
And have a public hearing.
We can't right now, you can't change the agenda.
She might later.
We approve.
I'll let it in. Mr. Chair, I want to make clear, I was not criticizing you for asking for a public hearing. I oppose it because of the consequences. I was speaking to the claim that we're not having a public hearing because we're trying to cover this up. And I was saying, anybody could ask for this public hearing. That's all I'm saying. And, you know, we have enough issues here with, with trust without making up some new ones.
Shannon.
To the comment that you and Al reached out to the newspaper, my understanding of the sequence of events is that that happened after the Wednesday work session when it went to the newspaper. My, also my understanding is that this line item here, someone from the media noticed that and said, "What, what is that about?" And I heard a school board member say that we wanted to table that answer after the Wednesday discussion.
You're incorrect on the timing, so I had many discussions with the newspaper prior to that meeting.
And in fact, in your presence, when this was placed on the agenda, I said and you said, "We want to make sure that this is done and gets out so that the public has notice." Whether, whether that was executed, I can't say, but, but there was no, you know, I certainly wasn't any part of saying, "Let's not let the public know about," in fact, the opposite.
Right, but did we do our due diligence to allow a time where public input could be made before the process got too far down the road? No.
So, ma'am, I can say one other thing. There's another proposal that was, you can call it transparent because it was put on the website, but to me, as a board member on the finance committee, this proposal did not come to the finance committee, and you can blow that off as nothing, but that's, we have a policy. These, these things cannot be approved by the board without coming to the finance committee. The finance committee makes a recommendation. The people who devised this idea, city leadership basically, chamber, city leadership, they are smart people, they know how things work. They chose, they chose not to bring this through to the board, or have public hearings, or have discussion, or answer board questions. They chose to do this. Now, two wrongs don't make a right, and I, and, but, you know, to, to talk about transparency, I was elected to do a fiduciary duty. Did I promise, indirectly did I promise that we would spend $14 million? Okay? And I think people out there need to understand, I don't think there's a single vote on this, there might be one vote, for spending the amount of money that it's actually going to cost. What we are talking about is earning trust by ultimately deciding not to go into the tech building, which we are not going to do because we can't afford to do it, and giving up the Minnesota School of Business is the price of earning trust. And there's, you made an eloquent argument for doing that. I mean, you did. And, and it might be true that we would earn some trust, but in the meantime, is the mayor and the city planner and the people who have command of the resources, are they going to come and sit in front of the board and talk about the amount of resources that the city's going to put to, to really redevelop this? Or are we going to have to do it with education money?
I think at this point, we are at a, we're at a point where we have a motion and a second on the table, and the discussions are turning back to the Minnesota School of Business, not whether or not we should have a, a delay on the vote. So with the motion, Mr. Moes, would you call all?
Will you clarify the motion and?
The motion was to table the vote on the Minnesota School of Business this evening until we can have a public hearing.
And I think in fairness, Monica intends, if the motion passes, that we would run over to Minnesota School of Business and try and get them to extend. She's not, is that fair? Or are you saying, "Let her go"?
What I'm saying, what?
I thought I heard you say, "We would try and get them to extend the, the period so that we could have the hearing." Is that fair?
But that's not part of my motion, but I will think that that's what Willie will do.
Yes, exactly.
The motion is to table the discussion, table the vote, which would move it down to the next, at the earliest it would be the next meeting, so.
Until we have a public meeting.
I understand, the motion, there would not be a vote until there's a public meeting, so it would not move it to any particular meeting date until there was a public meeting. Is that?
Public hearing.
I was just saying it would occur, that, that the public meeting.
The public input occurs at the next meeting, so I would assume that.
Well, we could, we can schedule, we can schedule a public hearing anytime that we can get, we really need seven board members, but we don't have to have the hearing on a regular meeting. In fact, it's very common to have a different hearing date than, I mean, we all have vacations and so on, and I think it's really important that if this happened, that we would all be available.
And, yeah, no, and I believe it would push it out, at least to the next meeting. So it'd be beyond the date on the purchase agreement, and they have not been very willing to work with us on that date. It's been pushed out a few times already. They don't seem to be very anxious to do it again. Jeff.
For issues of clarity, motions aren't supposed to be a fluid thing. Could I ask Monica just to repeat the motion once, take time, think about it, and let's vote on the motion? It shouldn't keep changing as we're talking. It should be a motion.
The motion was to table the vote until we could have a public hearing.
Monica, are you talking about defining public hearing as our Wednesday work session?
No, I did not define it. We have the possibility to discuss how the public hearing will look like.
Okay, thank you.
Maker of the motion, Monica Segura-Schwarz.
I vote yes.
Second maker of the motion, Shannon Haas.
Yes.
Jeff Pohlreis.
No.
Jerry Van Korn.
No.
Al Dogren.
No.
Bruce Moes.
Yes.
Bruce Hentges.
No.
So that motion fails. So now we are back to discussion on the Minnesota School of Business.
Is there a motion? Do we have a motion on the Minnesota School of Business?
We haven't, we haven't put a motion.
Not yet, no.
You're going to do that from?
We can do it, or, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we purchase the property located at 1201 Second Street South, Wake Park, formerly known as Minnesota School of Business.
So we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
A second about Jerry. Discussion. Mr. Hentges.
My, my thoughts on this, I'm going to support the motion. In the end, I just feel there is no way for me to defend expending tax dollars to remodel one small part of Tech High School. Forty thousand square feet out of 460,000 square feet, especially when we can purchase an appropriate site for half of that cost. And those costs don't include all of the ongoing hidden expenses that would surely come along with owning a building that's 100 years old and that always come with a remodeling project anyway. And then we have to deal with the rest of the building. I, I simply can't defend it, is, is the problem. I am quite sure that if we did that, we would come under strong criticism from many district residents who would question our fiduciary judgment. I am concerned about the public perception that the school board made a commitment to stay at Tech and did it in order to get the levy passed. I am, I am extremely concerned about that. I wish that we had clarified to the advisory committee and to the public, our position as a board last fall. I think I know what our position was, but I can't say that we did an effective job of, of clarifying it. If people voted for the new high school only because they believed that we would stay at Tech, I'm also concerned about that. Because I think the evidence overwhelmingly demonstrated that we need a new educational building for our students. And I have walked the new property and have seen the plans for the new building, and it can be educationally changing for this district. I am willing to vote to support the purchase of the Minnesota School of Business building while also giving the community time to develop a proposal that makes sense and would keep the tech building in district hands, or at least in a, whatever, a purpose that fits the neighborhood, is approved by the city, and works for this community. If we're able to do that, and if it somehow can be shown that it would work for a district office building, then frankly, we could take a look at selling the Minnesota School of Business building if we needed to. I think that to miss this opportunity could, de facto, put us in a position where it ends up costing us considerably more to address the need that we have. At first glance, I like the proposal that we were handed as we came in about bringing many of the community members, especially from the south side, the downtown council together, and, and let's come up with that plan. I'm certainly open to it and would hope that we can find something that would meet all of our needs, and most especially, the educational needs of the students in District 742. So that's where I am.
Mr. Pohlreis. Bruce Moes has not spoken yet.
Mr. Chair, I've made some prepared remarks, and I'm going to read those remarks. And this is what my feelings are. So the nameplate that's in front of me right here identifies me by Bruce Moes, and implicitly and explicitly now, I can only speak on behalf of myself. There's no attachment, my remarks have no attachment to anybody else on this board. They're just my remarks.
Excuse me, feedback, does somebody else have a mic on? It's, okay.
So, this is how I'm going to lead into my perspective. So addition to my duties as a member of this Board of Education, as a member of the Tech High School Alumni Association, I've spent the better part of two years working in a leadership capacity to dream, plan, organize, and implement the Tech Centennial Celebration, which spotlights and illuminates 100 years of tech history, tradition, and legacy. And during the year 2017, students, faculty, alumni, friends, and citizens are reminiscing about the past, sharing in the present, and planning for the future. And the past, present, and future of Tech is rooted mainly in its students, faculty, educational programs, and professional services. To many of its alumni, Tech as a building is an important part of the storyline, but it is not the central character. The most important part of the story lies in the education, preparation, and success of its nearly 35,000 alumni scattered across seven continents and 200 sovereign states worldwide. So while we're sitting here tonight contemplating, discussing, and taking action on a question that decides where to locate the administrative offices of the school district, a question which only remotely touches upon Tech High School as an educational institution as it enters the 18th year of the 21st century. As I see it, the future of Tech High School as an educational institution depends not upon whether we decide to purchase a building at a very reasonable price, or decide to repurpose a building at a very unreasonable cost. The future of all our schools, including Tech High School, depends upon an educational vision which is supported by an entire community of citizens currently residing in six cities, three townships, and parts of four counties. And the future of all of our schools depends upon generations of citizens yet unborn. The larger question for me is how do we assemble and motivate a community of citizens within the public, private, and nonprofit sectors of our community to vision collectively, imagine creatively, and work collegially to determine what to do with a nearly 10-acre parcel of land located in the current heart of the city, extending from Division Street to Eighth Street and 10th Avenue to 13th Avenue? What is the most purposeful use of this land and its buildings and facilities, which in two years will no longer serve as a public school, but perhaps find multiuses as recreational, residential, artistic, entrepreneurial, and athletic spaces? It will take a collective imagination, vision, resolve, and courage to utilize this corridor of land as something for current and future generations. So I'm a lot more centered and concerned about a community that's not only whole in its support of public school education, but whole also in its resolve to work together supportively and harmoniously to create something profitable publicly for generations of citizens yet unborn. The decision to purchase or not purchase the Minnesota School of Business property is admittedly a hurried decision, but it's the result of both chance and choice. But it's a decision that has to be, be made by this representative elective body, not by any other individual nor by any advisory committee. However, the larger and more important decisions have to be made collectively and collegially by the stakeholders, the opinion shapers, and the decision makers throughout this community that will ultimately decide to look forward and not backward by resetting the narrative from deficits to assets, from scarcity to abundance, from pessimism to optimism, from despair to hope, from suspicion to determination, from fear to assurance, from isolation to engagement, and from distrust to trust. I'm prepared to vote in support of this motion, but I will cast my vote with hope, optimism, and assurance that the majority vote of this school board will be the catalyst for a renewed effort by the broader community to imagine and develop the current school district properties of Tech High School, Clarkfield, and the Media Center into a visionary and promissory use for all citizens now and in the future. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. And I also have a statement that I wrote ahead of time that I want to share. And it starts with our mission statement, which says that our mission, what we do is to create a safe and caring climate and culture in which we prepare, engage, educate, empower, and inspire all learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society. Our mission guides us, and its focus is on the educational outcome of our students. A major role of this board is to oversee the allocation of public resources to ensure the effective and efficient use for the purpose of enhancing educational outcomes in our district. I cannot see an educational benefit for spending an additional $6.5 million or more to renovate Tech. To me, it is an investment of education dollars in city redevelopment, and it is a breach of the proper use of school resources. Further, I see a 40,000-square-foot renovation in a 300,000-square-foot or more facility owned by us as merely a down payment on a much larger needed redevelopment project. I do believe we have a role, as outlined in our mission statement, to be a good neighbor and to work with the best interests of our community in mind. Therefore, I support any effort by the superintendent to partner with the city and facilitate a realistic redevelopment effort for the Tech property that is good for the neighborhood, good for the city, and good for the school district. This is a beautiful piece of property, and it's deserving of a much larger and more vibrant redevelopment effort than placing an administrative office building in 10% of the structure while the remaining 90% remains empty. If we purchase the Minnesota School of Business, the $6 million less spent on relocating the district administrative offices can be used for other educational capital purchases. I will name four of which I believe are high-value initiatives. One, the modernization and reallocation of space being vacated at Apollo High School for the purpose of expanding career and Tech offerings, as well as general education classroom space. Number two, completing the electronic device one-to-one initiative. Number three, finding a permanent solution for a year-round gymnastics space. Number four, completion of safe and secure entrances at all of our schools. These are four programs with educational benefit we would have no funds for if we spend $12 million on the relocation of the district office. I will be voting to support the purchase of the Minnesota School of Business for the purpose of relocating our district office, media services, and welcome center. Thank you. Not going to go too much longer on discussion because it's kind of just becoming a back-and-forth. I'm going to rebut everything you say, so that isn't...
Okay. I appreciate the what else we could do with the money. I just want to clarify that as much as I'm an advocate strongly for one of those on there, I do not want any connection drawn between the two of them. They don't want to be attached to this decision. They don't want to be a part of, well, you saved money for this.
Shannon, and I'm going to rebut you. I did not attach them to it. I said that as one of my, I listed four high-value targets that I see where that money could be spent, and that happens to be one of them. I did not bring them into it at all, so please stop.
I just don't want it interpreted as that we're going to do, we'd rather do this with the money. I cannot support this tonight. I am not saying that I want to spend unnecessary money. I am not saying that I am, I only, I want administration at the Tech Building. I am just saying, not today, not now. Our administrative offices are not homeless. There's no hurry. We don't need to make this decision a couple of years from now. I'm sure there'll be, if the business college is sold, I am sure there'll be another great facility that if we pass a referendum, we can move the offices, or even without the referendum. There is no sense of urgency for relocating the offices. Let's put a community-based decision on the table first. Excuse my cynicism, that I think that after we vote this and pass it on, that people are going to be so adamant about what to do with the Tech Building.
Thank you. Monica, last word.
Bruce, you always are very eloquent. I really appreciate your words. I like the way that you talk, but I don't agree with all what you said. The part of, you said that we have a chance to do this. Yes, it came as an opportunity, but we do have the choice. The choice is ours right now, and we have the ability to choose, and that's the power that we have been getting into. Mr. Chair, I really agree with all what you have said. I made a motion because I felt that we were discussing about two different things around this motion, but my other motion didn't pass, so I'm forced to talk about two different things right now. We are talking about the purchases of a building. It is a building. It is not the lottery win. It is not the last building over the face of Saint Cloud. It is not the Taj Mahal. It's not a building that is given for free to us. It's a building. It's just a building. It's a building that we can let go. And if we decide that it's the ultimate building that we cannot let it go right now, we are risking our future conversations about that magnificent plant that you were discussing before. We are not discussing right now, right now at this moment with this motion, we are not discussing about whether spending $6 million today or to spending $12 million in another thing. That's not what we're discussing right now. The fact that we buy this building or that we don't buy this building, it does not mean that we are going to renovate or not Tech Building. That's not attached to this initiative. What I was asking before was the opportunity to work in all what you have said, what you all, Jerry, Bruce, Bruce have said about working with the community. That's what this is about, to work together with the community about how are we going to pursue in getting, as Shannon calls it, a win-win situation? How are we going to work together to define the future of Tech? Maybe the future of Tech is not administrative offices. Maybe it's not. I'm not saying that I'm going to support that or that anybody here is completely swamped into that idea. I don't really believe that people believe that that is the ultimate opportunity for Tech, but they do want to have a clarity of what we're doing, and that's what they have on the table right now. That's what we led them to believe, even if we didn't promise it. That's what we led them to believe, or we're not active enough to not let them to believe that. And I don't think that we can really close our eyes and say, okay, no, no, we did not promise, and we did exhaustively all what we could do to have people not to believe that that's what we're going to do with that building. I'm just saying, let's get back to the drawing board. Let's bring the community together, and let's work together in how are we going to do everything that has to be done? Let's give another chance to the Minnesota School of Business, or let's give another chance to another building. This is just a building.
Thank you, Monica. Mr. Mose would you call the...
Shannon, are you cutting our discussion now then?
Yes.
The maker of the motion, Monica Segura-Schwarz. No, no, excuse me. I'm sorry, run another item. Thank you very much.
It was you, was it? Yes.
Okay. Give me a quick instruction here, please. I'd like to be...
Jeff.
Jeff and Jerry, thank you very much. Maker of the motion, Jeff Polis.
Yes.
Second maker of the motion, Jerry Von Korf.
Yes.
Shannon Hawes.
No.
Al Dahlgren.
Yes.
Bruce Mose.
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz.
No.
Bruce Henches.
Yes.
So the motion passes five to two.
Every guesswork is an investment in what's on the next 699.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to be quiet. We don't take public input at the meetings and...
You misled us.
I'm sorry, we don't take public meeting. We don't take public comment at these meetings if you have... Listen, I'm going to ask you to stop. We have, I have to keep this meeting in control. We have public input at our next work session, so if you have something to say, please write it down, bring it to the work session, and you'll be given an opportunity to speak.
We have time for the work session?
Work session is at 6:30 on Wednesday, the 9th. Apollo High School.
Good luck getting in.
What door can they get in?
Basically, you have to reverse that, that straight mark.
Let's just please have all the doors or signs posted, what door they can come in.
That's fine.
Self-end.
Our next item on the agenda is reports, the superintendent's report, and Mr. Willie
Chair Dahlgren, members of the board. When I first looked at this part of the agenda for my superintendent's report, we are in a whirlwind. And so what I'll say, we're in the midst of that mad rush to prepare for the upcoming school year, the planning of workshop week, administrative retreats, back-to-school events, the continued excitement of new construction at Quarry View and the New Tech High School. It's a whirlwind of things happening. If you were to be at a cabinet meeting or a district leadership team meeting, people are breathless, and people are, but they're excited. And so my superintendent's report is of just that, that we are extremely busy, that we're extremely excited. People cannot wait for our students and our community to come back to school in September. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Willie. Next is the standing committee reports, Board Development Policy and Governance. Shannon Hawes.
We have met twice since our last Thursday meeting. We are in the process of planning a retreat, and I sent out a first date, and I've pulled that one back and sent out a second date, so please get back to me if you can make that. It's Tuesday, the 19th of September. The first half will be a book study, and it is on key works. And books are in order. In order to benefit the book study, you need to get the books into your hands and read them. And then the second half of the retreat, we are in the design phase of some topics, so if you have any thoughts, please let me know. One of the topic, or we have a couple of topics in discussion. One is about electronics and the school board going electronics and saving some paper and trees, which I really like because we accumulate a lot of paper here. The other one is talking about the possibility of holding some of our community sessions other than at Apollo, so that we would be gathering in outer communities outside of Saint Cloud. Thank you. Yes, I would book yourself for all day.
At the development meeting, we said eight to four. Is that right? And it's at the St. Joseph Government Center?
As long as we can...
As long as it's available for that date.
And I think it is. So just confirm with me the date. But yeah, I would plan eight to four, September. We're looking at Tuesday now, so get back to me.
Next is the Finance and Audit Committee, Jeff Polis.
I apologize, it's going to be a little bit lengthy. Present at the meeting was Jerry Von Korf, Jeff Polis, Bruce Henches, Amy Scholarood, Willie Jett, James Newman. We did have two guests there, guest speakers, David Leopold and Mike Spanier. We had an observer from the community, Scott Andreasen. First up on the agenda was process procedures of bid packages. This concern was brought up by Jerry, but echoed by other several board members at a previous board meeting. Concern was expressed that specifications for bid packages could be changed without the knowledge of the school board. David explained that the board approves the call for bids with no obligation. When the bids come in, the board can approve one of them or none of them. David explained that the one, that for the new Tech, they are using a fast-track method because of the timeline. This means that development begins before the design process is finished. Question was raised about the school board approving specs. David said that doesn't happen very often. Typically, the board sees the site plans and floor plans and then approves the call for bids. Question, by approving the bid package, who is the board actually given the authority to sign off on changes to the specs? Amy stated that her office has a copy of the bid specs before the call for bids go out. David said that construction manager usually determines how to put the bid packages together to get the most efficient and cost-effective bids. Jerry's concern is that, is could this be giving the construction manager too much control? Mike said that sometimes specs are written in a way that would exclude some contractors from bidding. David explained that sometimes this is done to prevent unqualified companies from bidding to protect equality. The project hence, and I think there was an example of steel quality. David will work with the construction manager to develop an explanation for the call for bids, and he will send that information to Amy via email and to the board. Second up on the agenda was the multi-use stadium at the New Tech. David explained that the setup of the multi-use slash football stadium at the New Tech, there will be a 2,000-seat seating capacity with the option to bring in portable bleachers to add seating for another 1,000. Next up was the auction process. I brought this up to the meeting. Amy clarified that she had actually set the auction date, and that because there are so few available dates in May, it often happens that the district auction falls on the same date as the county auction. That was my concern. I did ask that we should go out for bids for an auctioneer. Amy said that she would get quotes next year, although since the district auctions are so small, it probably would not result in a large savings. Amy said the furniture at the old Tech will probably be sold at a separate auction. Next up on the agenda was solutions to the gymnastic issue. Basically, I put this on the agenda so the issue would not be forgotten. The committee discussed and will continue to discuss options in this item every other couple of months. We did have a meeting with, it was brought up by the community member, Scott, that there was, Scott said that Willie had asked him and Gary to meet with the neighbors of the New Tech, but that hasn't happened yet, and he is concerned as his decisions are being made, there are decisions being made without their input. Willie explained at the meeting that it is to share information with neighbors and not to request their input. Willie said that Mike Spanier has already started to have some conversations with the neighbors, and the meeting will be held right after school starts. Last on the agenda was a long-term facilities maintenance plan. Amy handed out and reviewed the 10-year expenditure plan. I'm not even, it's everything that was in the plan that was handed out here. It talks about, there's other line items that might fluctuate because Amy and Derek are developing a plan for the fiscal year 2019 and beyond. Suggestion was made to add an explanation from Amy to the board agenda, which she did tonight, and brought it to the board, which she did. That pretty much was it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Could I just make one comment?
Yes, Bruce.
Just, Jeff, just as a very minor point, but I think we should really be careful that we refer to the new field as the multipurpose field or multipurpose stadium, nothing in parentheses, because it's three programs, equal use of that facility.
Multi-use field.
Field.
Okay. Duly noted.
Legislative Committee, Bruce Henches.
We did not meet this month. We will be meeting on August 18th, but maybe somewhat related to that, I would just like to say thanks to the board for the discussion that we just had. I think that it's only once in a while that we get into a give and take that includes the emotion and feelings that we dealt with in our discussion today. And it's an important part of the process that we can have that discussion, and even have that discussion with an audience presence, make our vote, and then we move on as a board. Certainly, I know that that's happened before, and it's nice to see that we can do that and still smile and work together.
Yes, and I was going to bring that up at the end of the meetings, but I'll say it right now since it has been brought up. But I was going to say the same thing. I was going to say thanks to everyone on the board. I know sometimes it's very difficult. Sometimes the board doesn't approve a solution that you are necessarily in favor of, and you're the one that is there that voted no. you're the one that is there that voted no. I've been there. Bruce, I know you've been there. We've all been there at one point in time. And you can walk away and you can feel disheartened, but in the end, we work as a board. We work very well together as a board, and when we make a decision, more often than not, that is the correct decision down the road. So just wanted to say thanks to everybody for their heartfelt input. Shannon?
I never have any hard feelings about disagreeing, and I'm happy to move on as with one voice after we vote. I appreciate the fact that we come to the table with differing opinions because that makes us better as a group.
Let us hope that when we move on, we're moving on on the project that you hold dear, which is doing something about that.
Bruce, were you done with the legislative committee? You did not meet? Okay, then we move to the Personnel and Negotiations Committee, Monica Segura-Schwarz.
So we met in June 28, and we were reviewing the health and health and plan renewals, also the recommendation, the recommended...the recommendations for the health insurance. We were in preparation for bargaining, and at our work session, we went slowly into that. Tracy brought it up to our work session, the budget timeline and assignments. So we did already that cover. And then we revised organizational charts for community education and teaching and learning and look at recommendations from the superintendent about some reassignments.
I want to emphasize to the board or remind the board that sometime during the course of the next 30 days, you should probably expect to see a questionnaire come your way for the superintendent's evaluation. It'll probably be the same one that we've done before. So some of you are familiar with the questions. The rest of you, you'll get it. You answer the questions, and we get those back, and we compile the answers. And we have a few other groups of employees that we ask also. So just expect to see that, and when you do get it, make sure you fill it out and get it right back to us so that we can compile the answers. Next report is...oh, you're not done. I'm sorry.
Yep. So now that you mentioned that, so yes, we're having the review of the superintendent. We talked about that also. And just wanted to add into the things that we talked was having in consideration that the health insurance increase will be expecting a health insurance contributions and salary increases. That was also part of what we discussed at our meeting, and you're all aware of that going into negotiations now.
Thank you, Monica. Next is the...Bruce, did I miss yours? No, it's the achievement, integration. And I did...okay, you can go at the end. It's the achievement, integration, and equity. Jerry Von Korf.
Mr. Chair, we met yesterday. We had a robust, challenging discussion. We asked the teaching and learning to give us a readout on what they think they know about how our kids did last year. And that led to a variety of discussions. I'm thinking that it's not working for me on Thursday to report what happened on Wednesday, and that I should...I would really like to do it in writing and then share it with the members and then bring it next time, if that's okay. I'd much rather have everybody on board. We did agree that we're going to attempt to make a list of the things that we want to get accomplished for the rest of the year. And I've sent out an invitation to thank everybody that was there. We'll share that list, refine it, and so that will be an attempt at the next meeting to figure out what focus we want and to give some advance warning to the staff as to where we're headed. But if this be okay, I'd just assume, get this in writing, share it with the committee, and then on the next meeting, do something a little more detailed.
Save the best for last, right, Bruce? Community linkages and engagement. Bruce Moes.
Before we move on, so I guess what Jerry's asking is if we will be reporting, instead of reporting on Thursday after a meeting, we will report in the Wednesday work session?
This next time, I would like...there was a lot of material, and some of it was...I don't want to say we all disagree, but we all add value to it, and we have a different perspective. And I want to try and capture that and give you a chance to help me capture it. Then at the next meeting, let's talk about how you felt about that. Would you like to do that or not? But I just...I don't feel prepared to do a decent job tonight.
Bruce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your kind remark. I'm not used to at a meeting getting complimented twice at a meeting here. Thank you. Thank you, Monica. Thank you, Al. So, yes, we did meet second Tuesday of July, and at our meeting, we...the linkage part of our meeting, we heard a report from Coco Wu, the coordinator, I believe is the title. I'm not certain, but I'll say coordinator of the Chinese immersion program at Madison School. And she particularly reviewed for all of us how that program is structured, what its purpose is, where its teachers come from, what...how the instruction takes place. I learned a term called the sandwich model. It makes a lot of sense. And then also, we heard from her on the recent trip for the upper class people in the immersion program that they went to China, and we heard about that program and its intentions and outcomes, purposes. Those are the kinds of insights we get when we invite persons into our meetings and give them the time to articulate what they are doing in our community, our community of educators, and in other instances, our community broader in our city and our neighborhoods. Coming up in this month, I am intending to...I've already invited, but we are looking forward to the presentation by one of our teachers in our district, Ayaan Omar. Ayaan is an English Language Arts teacher at Tech High School, and during the summer, she's employed in some capacity, working with young Somali youth in a program helping to develop leadership and behaviors related to academic performance. I've talked with Ayaan about this, and if you ever have a conversation with Ayaan Omar, you just can't help but come away pretty darn impressed and pretty informed, inspired, and instructed by her. I like the part where she just instructs the heck out of you. I like that part. And that, to me, that's the best part of being in education is having people instruct us. We instruct each other. And then in the future, I'm very hopeful, and I already talked with Melissa Hansick Brill, who will be reporting out to us on a program that she's involved with in which mathematics and art are taught in a program called SMART. And that's in concert with the arts, with the Paramount Theater. So our meeting this month will feature, hopefully, Ayaan Omar and in September, Melissa Hansick Brill. Might mention that in terms of community engagement, in which, Mr. Chair, you reminded us that community engagement is not only the members of the committee going into the community and engaging, but all members of the board going out and engaging, and that constitutes community engagement. And I don't know if there's a better engagement on the horizon than tomorrow evening down at Tech High School, Clarkfield, Lake George, all day tomorrow into tomorrow evening, the tech centennial celebration. You know about it. It's for free, excepting for the food and beverages you may consume. But it's a wonderful day, and there will be a wonderful set of people there, community people, alumni, students, educators, all coming together for this weekend, tomorrow, and then on Saturday to celebrate the centennial history of Tech High School. Tickets are still available on Saturday at eventbrite.com to purchase tickets for the Centennial Celebration banquet at the Rivers Edge Convention Center. I read the Eventbrite printouts every day. I know who's coming. And I invite all of you to spend easily $45, the best ticket in town, to come and be informed, inspired, and instructed by the people that are on our program. You won't regret it. That is engagement at its finest. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience, I'm looking forward to seeing you there. You'll like it. Thank you very much.
Bruce Hentges.
Mr. Chair, back in 2000, I was on the Tech Alumni Board, and this guy came back to town. I had actually never known him before from a teaching career in Wisconsin and joined the Tech Alumni Board. And the first thing that he said when he came to the meeting was, "Do you realize that the 100th anniversary of Tech High School is only 17 years away? We need to start planning for this." And frankly, Bruce Moes has been planning for it since then. And, you know, I hope people do come out and take part in the activities. Bruce has poured a lot of blood and sweat, and I don't know about tears, but certainly his passion for this has been kind of inspirational to me and I think other people. He's done a great job, and it's going to be a great two days as long as people turn out and take part in it. So I would just like to publicly thank Mr. Moes for his work. And now, yeah. And Bruce, now you've been complimented three times in one meeting.
Three times.
Maybe that takes care of the rest of the year.
You know, in the military, three times on a match is fatal.
And can I say, because I'm not an alum, but we...I did go to my all-school reunion, and I wasn't sure how it was going to come out, but if anybody's sitting on the fence, it was fabulous. You know, we saw people from other generations, and I think you're having the oldest tech graduate and her. We did too, and we had lots of stories. I would really urge people...I just had a blast.
Thank you, Jerry. And just a reminder to that, and we purposely, this is the centennial celebration, it isn't a reunion in the sense that classes are coming together to see each other, but this is bringing alumni, citizens, friends of Tech, all sorts of people together to celebrate the partnership that this school has had with this community. And I certainly do appreciate your endorsement of it. And yes, we have a woman from the class of 1935, Walberga Rehoff, and she said, "Call me Wally." That's what I was called in 1935. But Wally with an I-E, not a Y, you know, that's a boy's name. So Walberga is going to talk about being a student in the mid-'30s, before the middle of the 20th century, and she's going to be followed by Georgina Simon, one of our best of this year, a young woman who's going to talk about being a student in the 21st century at Tech. And we're going to compare and contrast that with Walberga. And then we have a faculty member from the mid-'50s. Some of you in this room remember her, and that is Pat Hill, Patricia Hill. And she's going to be talking about being on a faculty in the middle of the 20th century. And then we have a young faculty member, Ayaan Omar, who's going to talk about being on a faculty in the first decades of the 21st century. And then we have former principals, many former principals that are going to be back that are legends in this district. And we have superintendents that will be there invited, and they will be speaking to us about Tech High School during their superintendencies. It's going to be a great evening. Luke Truitt, who many of you remember from the Tech High School graduation, Luke is the keynote speaker. There's not a person in town, I don't think, that will dare compete with Luke Truitt.
I'm not after him. I'm not after him.
No, you're not after him. Nope. I was...I'm taking care of you, Willie. I'm taking care of you. Luke Truitt's the keynote speaker. And, gosh, and you can read all about it in this program that's at your chair's here. Gentlemen in the press, I'll make sure...and ladies in the press, I'll make sure you have this also. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm finally done.
Thank you. Next is future agenda items. At this point, on the agenda for the work session, we have a new school, new high school update. And that is the only item that's on there right now. I would guess that there will be one or two added before the workshop. Does anyone have any input on items that would like on that agenda?
Is it possible to...I know we discussed it tonight, and I've heard rumblings. Do we have any discretionary money that we could have a seed developer conversation to get started on the repurposing of Tech?
Mr. Chair...
Jump into that?
Mr. Chair, the superintendent asked me to see if we could find somebody, and we had a...we had an hour-long conversation with an experienced developer who has worked on the master plan for Lake George, for Sac Rapids, and Cold Spring, and has won awards across the state. But we decided that we need to do some more work, and Shannon is going to talk to the arts people. I think the intent...but I do think it would be a good idea to bring to the board meeting what the heck we found out, if we found out enough to talk about. Because I think people need to...people are...they're going to be angry, some of them, and I do think they need to see us keeping our moral commitment. And the other thing I think that it might be well is to have some way to work, to bring back the city people in dialogue as well.
Yeah, so Willie, the request was to have a discussion in the work session concerning the redevelopment of the Tech property and possible working with a city planner. So I'll let you take that. I mean, you bring the items to the agenda planning meeting, so I would just make a note of that, if you would.
I was just going to say, I hope that that might, like the update of the New Tech High School, the update on developments for how we are going to repurpose Tech High School, or what's going to happen to Tech High School, really should be on our monthly agenda for an update on where we are so that we are making sure that progress is being made towards going up with it.
I think that's a fabulous idea.
It wouldn't hurt to get it on our Finance Committee agenda as well.
Who are you looking for an update from?
Whoever's going to be charged with leading the process and including community members in a discussion on how to best use Tech. Obviously, Shannon, I presume, is going to be part of that group. And I presume maybe it's the superintendent who is...
I believe...can I just step in and say, I believe that Shannon would be a part of it. Shannon is very...I mean, that's...she's...yes, she's very interested in being a part of that. I think that the superintendent is...you know, would be interested in being a part of that. I also believe that the city has a role to play, and that needs to come into play here, too. And whether the city would ever take the lead or not in a redevelopment effort of that property, I can't say. So maybe a little difficult if the city were to take a leadership role to get an update at our work sessions from the city. But I do not have any problems with having an update from a member of the committee.
We certainly have to take a leadership role as a district to get things rolling and to get some answers in terms of what's the city going to do, what are we going to do? There's groups that are identified on their proposal that they gave us tonight that might be worth getting in contact with to have.
One of the topics that we...of discussion we had, an hour-long discussion with this fellow, and I think it was going to be some other person, it'd be the same thing. Could we pay you... we pay you to start something rolling such that people got excited about what you're doing and how you're doing it so that the city would jump in? And because the truth of the matter is that the cost of, if we're really going to do something spectacular, if something spectacular is going to be, the cost of getting there is even probably beyond our means. But if we could, if we could use it as seed money and get people excited and restore some kind of sense that we're actually going to do it, that probably it would be infectious. I call it stone soup, you know, if you know how that works.
And Bruce, I'm not trying to stifle your request. I'm just kind of saying from who, because I think it's an evolving process where maybe we are very involved in the beginning to kickstart it, but as it evolves and moves down the path, depending on, you know, how involved, say, the city would get with different types of financing arrangements or those types of things, they may take more of a lead role, but we'd still probably have someone on that committee that could update us. So I just, just to be clear.
Well, and my only point is, I think one of the reasons we had an issue tonight, why we had people here tonight, is because we are sitting a year almost away from that referendum, and we have not called people together to develop a plan that I, you know, I think we have to lead that effort, don't we?
I believe that with.
We can't expect the city to make the first move or anything.
No, but I do believe that with tonight's vote, it brings some clarity to the situation, and now we know that there is a direction that we have to move. So, Jerry, did you have a comment?
No, I agree with what you just said.
Any others? Did someone else raise their hand when I was asking? Monica?
So it was something similar to what Jeff was asking, but I'm not clear what is what we suggested for the agenda, that we will, what is what we're going to talk about next time?
The current list of items for the agenda is the new high school update.
So the other item that I wanted to suggest for discussion in the agenda is how to proceed with the Tech High School, kind of continuing the conversation that you were just having right now.
We just, that's what this was. He hasn't put it on the list yet.
But it goes to Willie, it goes to Willie, and Willie brings to the agenda committee the topics for the next workshop. So it would have, so we asked Willie to make a notation to bring that as a agenda topic for the next agenda-setting committee.
Thank you, Chair. That's what I was asking.
Yes. You're welcome. Is there any other comments, suggestions, anything for the good of the cause? If not, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
I'm sitting right here.
Do you want to blow it?
I'm glad I'm sitting right here.
Why?
Just because you're sitting there, and we get to have a colloquial occasion.